Okay, call this meeting's order. It's December 4th, 2017, 10 o'clock. Roll call, Smiley.
Here.
Hamlin.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting, November 27th, 2017.
I'm going to approve those.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Number five, approved, disapproved. Monthly reports for the following: Sessions Office, Treasurer's Office, County Clerk, Election Board, Court Clerk, Health Department, and Sheriff's Office.
And I didn't get the Election Board or the Sheriff's Office. So, not available.
No election.
Right.
I move that we accept the others. Sessions, Court Clerk, County Clerk, Health Department, Treasurer's Office.
Paul's second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
What's the number?
Heavily. We had five times as many people as they did.
Really?
Why?
We, when you think of Ranger Field, think of the west side.
That's real bad. Wow.
And you think the other visitor side, they had a hundred.
Really?
They were stung. Wow.
No, it's down there. They needed, yeah. They don't, they didn't study. They got old rocks.
They're lousy parking.
Yeah, that's terrible.
Gee.
You know, they spent much money to rejuvenate the field, you know. Here, here they go. I always think.
Electrical turf and a little bed.
Didn't do much for the park, you know. It's never been any good.
Poured out a couple blocks worth of houses, wasn't it?
Yeah. I don't know, from there, literally.
Number six, discussion possible action regarding monthly appropriations. Motion.
I'll make that motion if we accept the monthly appropriations.
I'll second.
On favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hold it in there about the same.
Yeah, let's pick around one. One sixty, little over. Yeah. One sixty-two to one sixty-nine, very low.
About right.
Little above last month, if I remember right.
Few dollars, yeah. Yeah, my son, I love kids from Long Creek. He told me, he said, "I want to be a teacher." I said, "Oh." He said, "No, I'm excited." And he said, "It just sucked after that, after first four seasons, like, made just beer and headlights."
Oh, after that third series.
I'll tell you what, I wish that playing up here.
I played with Bob Keating, he was fast as a rabbit. Not very tough, but just real bad. And his bullet, he was playing down there, defensive line, or something. Bob was, he was always some kind of bad receiver, so, and that's, but I said.
I liked to watch it.
I said, "Well, you Bob."
Yeah. I liked to watch it, Shaq over Army.
Yeah, that'd be tough.
Oh, man.
It's gonna be down some time.
Yeah, it's just been here. I wonder why they, do they bid those, Liam?
Yeah.
They usually go halfway between.
Well, yeah.
Try.
But, but they still get bid.
But, I imagine Northwestern got it last year, and they're probably trying to kind of spread it around. Why would they go off them there?
Well, I think actually Northwestern's had more games leading to this year than they've had in the past.
Yeah.
The athletes, they're kind of work to us, because they like kids to see from campus, they like it to school there.
Right, did that. Well, and you get other kids coming here from ball games and.
Yeah, we're sure wishing that Nova game could have been here, and since it has fought their facilities. Linda, ten of her sons, she said, "They can share a dressing room."
Really?
Isn't that true?
Yeah, there ain't much over there, no rock. Yeah, we should look back at it. It was eighty-seven.
I think it was over there.
I'm gonna use the fact.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We played there when I was in junior high, and I, hell, we probably dressed sun and fuzz before.
Oh, yeah. Our grass is right over there.
Yeah.
We did that a lot.
Okay, number seven, discussion possible action regarding the ODOT form 324A in an amount of $4,043.25 designed for job project 2558004 and 06.
That is just B3? I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
I'll second B3.
Yeah, it's that Lake Creek project.
John only designed the three that are red, so it's on there somewhere with the others.
It's second.
Yeah.
On favor.
Aye.
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 The three X's. This invoice or just an agreement, presumably?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, it's an invoice, okay.
For that job?
No.
Bridge inspection.
An inspection.
That's number eight that you're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I would guess that that is, maybe has to do with, um, David's 370, because it's a superstructure, a substructure, and culvert.
Soon as started putting mine off down the other day. Yeah, and I put the base down. Yeah. At the start, yeah, I wanted to put the first one down, yeah.
They didn't say which.
Culver, she said, it starts with this one.
I know.
They put that down, and then.
And I thought he'd be here.
Six, there'll be six inches of that one or down.
Of that base, of that?
No.
Or the whole road, yeah.
Whole road, yeah.
Probably four and two.
Yeah, probably, that much rock or better.
Okay, number eight, discussion possible action regarding bridge inspection, invoice, and report of conference between Woods County and CDA. I don't know which bridge this is, it's not, it's not listed here.
Thank you.
Exactly, it's just got. Bridges with MBI rating of two for items, fifty-nine sub, superstructure, sixty substructure, or sixty-two culvert along with recommended, along with recommended actions to take. But it doesn't say where.
Doesn't give a direction or?
Doesn't give anything, uh.
We don't know what it is, how can we do anything?
Well, that's what I'm, yeah. I'm guessing that's what we need to do until we find out for sure. It may not be ours.
I'll make that motion if we table that until we get.
Okay.
My second, yeah.
A little more info.
On favor.
Aye.
You seen place under David that says where it is or what it is?
I don't think you guys did, because I looked it over, looked it over, and I thought, boy, this is strange. This, all of it was.
Is it, is it for all of them, that when he goes and?
No, I don't think.
I think it's just the one.
Well, still, even if it was, it's in employee cost per hour, total booth.
Well, if it didn't have those numbers, maybe that's the, what they inspect is the culverts and all. I thought that we had to do that after we did last week.
Right.
We went through that great decision who was going to do the inspections was last week.
But it says, if average time for bridges over four hours provide a reason, was that maybe?
And, and maybe that's just us saying that we're wanting to hire them to do our bridge inspection, yeah. That may be it, but I still think.
Maybe, we'll find out.
Probably, it doesn't have to be done, well, the CD meetings Wednesday, but it doesn't matter, I think. So, we'll just find, I'll find out more before we.
Sounds good.
Shooting in the dark, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, number nine, discussion of possible action regarding resolution declaring the intent to consider approval of a project plan, creation of a tax increment district or districts under the Local Development Act. Directing preparation of a project plan and approving a memorandum of understanding between Woods County and the city of Alva. Appointing a review committee, directing the review committee to make findings as to eligibility and financial impact, if any, on taxing jurisdictions and business activities within a district. And directing the review committee to make a recommendation with respect to the proposed project. Okay, this is my understanding, it's just the formalities that we have to go through, that we have to approve to do this, is this why you're down here, Nana?
I'm just listening.
Okay. This is just the, the beginning of setting up a TIF district, or tax increment financing district, for their arena project.
So, they're basically just, we're just forming a committee?
Yeah.
To see what the impact?
We aren't really forming, and I think we're going to put a member on there in the next deal, our member, but, and then we'll do whatever it says we have to. But it's gonna be about six or seven, or seven, probably an uneven number of members, whatever they're listed, I think, on, in the next deal. Or in that deal you sent, you emailed me, of who they all are, but one of the commissioners needs to be on there. And it's just a formality, and this is set up, get a project plan, and then there'll be a public hearing. And I suppose that project plan will be to designate the area that the TIF district will actually cover. I mean, I haven't seen, I seen a preliminary.
There's probably a lot of boots to jump through.
There, there are several, and it's, uh.
And, and in this first, in this resolution, we have to decide, or you guys have to decide who is going to?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, I just want to make sure we got that.
Is, is that in this first or second?
That's in this first one.
Okay.
And one second, the pages mixed up.
Let's see what's, well.
Let's see if page two continues on, but like, it should be, yeah, fix that, okay, so we maybe have a.
Okay.
And then somebody, one second, on page three, then have that. I think that had three places. I think we had two again.
Do we have any in Woods County? The rail park.
Yes.
Right, right.
And all, all it amounts to depends on the area that they, they put in it. And I don't know if that's, that hasn't been decided yet, that's probably what this committee will determine for sure. Any new, the only effect that I know of that just has on anybody in Woods County is Alva Public Schools and the vote tech.
How would that be?
The vote tech taxes, it's ad lorm.
It's taken away.
It's what the TIF district is.
So, is it, that was a little.
If there is new, new goes on in this area.
New development, yeah.
So, they will get the potential, take advantage of the new.
From the point that it's said, uh.
If it's set up just in that area, then that's the only area.
Right.
If it encompasses like Walmart, then that, that'd be a problem with this.
No.
No, no.
Because Walmart's already.
It's all, it's already there, it's ad lorm.
Now, there's business.
Right, it's any.
Now, if, if, let's say.
If they built a new Backwoods or a.
If they built something new out there in that area.
In that district, then that revenue would.
Yes.
Go towards.
It goes to the arena project, and it's more infrastructure, is what they say.
Over the base?
Anything over the base amount, so with any, if, um.
There's no reduction.
Truck stop takes off and has a big boom, then any of that extra that they make, if it's in the TIF area, they don't.
Has a big boom in a matter of, a what?
Well, if they start selling Bukooza stuff, or add-on, or do something, if Walmart suddenly starts selling twice what they are now, all of that extra that they sell, if that's in the TIF area, you won't get any of that extra.
That, is that's ad lorm, what they sell?
Well, no, well, but.
Their base.
What they, what they bring in, anything they assess, yeah.
Okay, but anything they just have?
Inventory is assessed.
At first of the year.
Yeah, inventory is assessed, yeah.
But if that goes up, then that extra goes to the TIF district?
Yeah.
Does that base ever change? Is that just?
No, stays whatever it is when they set it up. But it depends on like, that, that encompasses what amount planned, why, you know, why.
Yeah, right, but, I mean, the inventory could, could be a small change, but probably not. I mean, if they'd add on to Walmart, yes, that would be, if they increase the size of it, or.
If it got into that district.
Yeah.
And I don't know how many years, I, I didn't see anything that said that they were setting it up, the most of them set them up for twenty-five years.
Yeah.
How big is the district?
I'm not sure, I think that's what this planning committee will do. Now, I've seen a preliminary, and they're going to encompass the current fairgrounds out there. Because here's the deal, they want to have it within the TIF district so they could spend for infrastructure, if they wanted to do something out there with the money that's created, to improve that, or do something different out there. That is the story I've been told, but I mean, I think this planning committee and all that, Lynn, are, they'll come up with the specifics, what they want to do. And then there will be a public hearing, we'll have to call a public hearing to, uh.
Where's that one?
And one of us, I don't have a clue, I just, I'm just going to kind of remember how the one at Avar worked. And, and then, there, there's gonna be members, this deal, if you read, there's gonna be members from all sectors of the, around, I mean, like, the city council, the, the schools, the. Yeah, and the members at large, and, uh, all that, I mean, they try to involve everybody that is gonna have anything to do with it. And, uh, we need to, in this, we need to say, adopt this, and then appoint a commissioner to be a co-chairman of the deal. And that's a co-chairman with, I think, somebody from the city council, the representative, or.
Probably so.
A city council member will be the two co-chairmans of this, the way I read this.
Ben, they'll bring it back to us, and then we'll make further recommendations on.
Well, the committee will.
Whether the TIF, uh, where it's gonna be, and how much, and, and all that impact, right?
Well, that, the public hearing is where all that will, will essentially go down, if I remember right, the way Avar's deal worked. We had, you remember being in there, it was a pretty full, full room in the conference room, we had that public hearing in there for the Avar deal. You know, they, it encompassed several people, and now, I don't know on that deal, but it was a county deal, we, we brought in, I remember Brett Smith. And I don't remember if Shanks or one of the Georges was representative from Winoka, but, but the Avar deal was a county-wide deal, and this essentially is everything that I know of is gonna stay in the city limits of Alva. That's not saying we can't have those people on there, but it's not gonna affect, uh, Avar affected Winoka schools, had an effect on it, Del Ross was at that time at that, on that.
That, all of that is, is Alva, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, uh, as my understanding, I mean, the planning committee will have to tell us, but, I guess, because there's no drawing of, of where this is gonna be. But the preliminary deal is, uh, that I've seen, is out there and takes on the current fairgrounds, both.
Well, from looking at this, it looks like all Alva, whether it's.
All city limits.
All Alva, all Alva. Do we want an Alva commissioner on there, do you want a third?
Yeah, I think, I think David should be our representative man in his district, what do you think? I mean, that is my recommendation.
Well, I, I don't know, I don't know enough about it. Does David, do you want to be on that?
Well, yeah, I'll certainly.
You want to deal with that?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine with me, but I, that, I mean, no other thing than working, I mean, just decide the district, you know, it's all the city limits.
Well, you'll be in on this committee to find out what all you do decide, I mean, I, I can't say, I wasn't on the committee for the Avar deal, I sit in on the public hearing.
No, I don't have a vote.
Just a guest, but, and, and watch that happen. Yeah, I mean, I think being in your district, that, I, I make the motion to.
But we vote on this, it's not set in stone, right? It's, it's, you're, you gotta form the committee and then come back, right?
Yeah, the public hearing, as far as I'm concerned.
We're just doing the committee to find out if.
Then you, we have to have a public hearing on it.
This is essentially saying we're in favor of moving forward.
Yeah.
Towards that, is my understanding.
Putting a member on the committee to.
Yes, yeah.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
And that would be a motion to approve this resolution and to put David as our representative. I'll let you put David's name in there, you go sign it and seal it.
All right.
All right, now we'll move on to ten, discussion possible action regarding memorandum of understanding between the city of Alva and Woods County regarding the creation of a joint project plan, an increment district, or districts for the Alva project. I'm, I'm confused as, that we didn't just do that, but whatever, if there's another one here.
I know, yeah. Are you gonna sell it?
That's, that's that one.
I don't understand that one either, and I'm not gonna vote on it if I don't understand it.
Well, all she said was that, resolution, you kind of have to do a resolution so that you can act, now you're acting, and you're, this would be a, just an understanding between the city of Alva and Woods County that you're gonna go forward.
Yeah, but we're not until we get this committee's, right?
You're supposed to get a recommendation from this committee, and if this next paragraph would be after you hear a recommendation.
That's the way I read.
What would you say?
Other ones, it looks like you're saying, go ahead and, and, we're, we're signing up for it.
That's what I, I read.
I think that's, yeah, I think you're right, that's exactly what you're doing. I think that was the intent, too.
This, what this memorandum is, according to this, is it actually gets our approval, or we're saying it's okay to set up the TIF district.
And, and, and I can't do that until I hear from Alva Public School, and Alva, and otherwise, other people, other, other than just these ones that sent us this paperwork to say, sign us up.
Okay, good, everybody.
I wouldn't feel right if I went ahead and signed us up for something that I don't know anything about. That's, that's, that's mine, that's how I feel about it. If it was a little flatter and, yeah.
What if you had a map? If you, I mean, you know, if you knew for sure what the boundaries were, too, that might make a difference. I don't know, that would not.
There's, there's just too many, there's too many unanswered questions to make, or as to proceed with ten, I mean, I'm good inside.
It's not, I mean, regarding the creation. Of a joint project plan. It really doesn't say that you're, it's applying to what it says.
Why don't you say that, then, why don't you put it all fancy word like that?
Well, I mean.
Lawyers.
Yeah. It's almost like this one should have been headed.
Well, I didn't think I was doing that.
Ten should have been headed, no.
Lawyers.
Yeah. Because, well, I still, when I wrote a paper, and I thought, well, okay, unless that's the review committee, good idea.
Yeah.
Then it's like, you guys are the review committee right now, and you're doing ten as a result of the review.
Ten should have been ahead of nine, almost.
We're not even, they've been in the, down the road.
It just looks to me like, ten, is.
They just take, said it to me and said, put it on there, they didn't tell me.
We're agreeing with the city of Alva to set up a committee, and then nine is the way we're setting.
What's it gonna hurt if we table it and, and find out more, and is it gonna throw a wrinkle in what they, I don't see where it'd throw a wrinkle in nine, they can still set up their committee. But until I find out more, I don't want to write my name in no stone, because I don't want to do that to him, I wouldn't want somebody to do that to me.
And that's the way she sent me, actually, the way she handed it, I don't remember things she thought about, she did.
And I don't trust lawyers unless they're mine.
She probably didn't know.
And I know that, and I don't like.
Because I think these bachelor's office sent this to her, and so she didn't know which direction, I mean.
Who had to put this on there?
Sonya.
Sonya?
Uh-huh.
You have a resolution that's out there, that's to consider. And then you have a memorandum.
That you're gonna do it.
Yeah. So, to be like.
So, really, the intent.
The memorandum should have been that we're going to do.
Yeah, I would say, I think she's right, it probably should have been reverse.
Not to.
We can do it next.
Maybe you do them both, same meeting, and then have it.
You guys go find out more about it.
In a way.
We can find out more about it, and then you can let me know.
Well, I think they can't do anything until the city council approves this.
Right.
Then it's co-chairmans, David and whoever the city council appoints.
Yeah.
Then they, and with this memorandum, it allows them to go and get a person from the Woods County Health Department, Northwest Technology Center, and Alva Public Schools, to serve on this review committee.
Right.
So, I mean, I guess that what we're doing with this memorandum would be giving our blessing to David and them, and the way I read this here.
To go forward.
To go forward, is the reason it's in, in that order.
I don't look at it like that, but.
Yeah, yeah, to me, go ahead.
We gave him our blessings when he picked him to be our, be the leader of the committee, I, I don't see where.
Well, and then in that memorandum, it says who's gonna be on the committee, and it gives the co-chairmans the, the ability to go set up that committee. it gives the co-chairmans the, the ability to go set up that committee is how I read that now. So in other words, our resolution is just saying it's okay and the memorandum says how to set up the committee.
Yeah, but it's not saying set up, it says memorandum of understanding between the city of Alba and Woods County regarding the creation of a joint project plan, increment district.
Council member and a.
That's saying.
Commissioner's.
Yeah, but that, it says in that memorandum right there that they have to set up that review committee first.
We have to set up our, we have to set up a city council member and a county commissioner member.
To actually start the process.
To start the process to select those members.
Members, yes.
That's how I read it.
Right.
We took the first step in the resolution by appointing a county committee.
Right, and now.
Now we're, we're allowed David to act on our behalf. And instead of our committees, the rest of the.
You got to get together.
Yeah, I agree.
We set our deal up here, our part, and we can't do anything until the city council sets their part.
But this allows you and that city council member to get together and to start in on, on getting the rest of the committee put together. Is, is the reason saying that.
Then after you go through that, then you go through the adoption process, which is adopting the resolution.
Then you get all the, everything put together and put in place and then that's when the,
yeah, maybe it's understanding.
That, that's when the House will have that here.
And it's not where I'm going with the accessories.
Not me.
Oh. She was here, you know.
But that's how I read that memorandum.
I, 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 yeah, as long as, I, I'll go with it, but as long as they ain't setting something up and without asking.
We can't, we can't do, we can't, we can't do an increment district, the committee can't vote on to do it.
No, they just set up.
We're right here.
All's we can do is if I'm on that committee, we can come back, I'll come back as that committee member and say, now this is what we've got, where we've done.
That's what I want, as long as we ain't doing that right now.
We can't vote on that till that's drawn.
No, that's what I said, that's why there'll be a, a hearing, a public hearing and, and here's, here's what we got to check on. And we're going to have, you'll call that public hearing.
Right.
And what have you, and, and what we've got to check on, I've been involved in two of those public hearings and there's been, and one was for a cemetery deal and one for the, which you guys hear at that time. And that, and I, we've had no opposition to anything and I know the final say is ours, but if there's opposition in this public hearing, we've got to decide how to move on with it if there is opposition.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I'm not certain if you, if it's just our final call or if we.
Well, I'm good with the final call, I just don't want to make a final call without hearing everybody.
No, we, we won't, that, that won't happen, but what I'm trying to say is if we go in there at that public hearing and there's, there's five people in there and three of them are for it, two of them are against it, or how you determine what our final call will be, you know, from that.
I want to put it right to them.
Yeah, well, yeah, but we'll have to see, but how you, how we make our decision, if it's just ours, whether they like it or not, or, or if we're supposed to, you know, a vote of how they, they feel about it, hopefully, hopefully.
I'll take all that into effect, but.
Hopefully everybody will be for it and we don't, or against it, one or the other will be all one way, is what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
If it's a mixed bag of, of opinions in there, then that becomes another question on how we deal with that.
Just like leaders, right through the fall.
Wow. Well, if that's a legal way to do it, I'm good with that, you know.
I'll lead the way, but I got to hear you behind me.
All right, I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and approve this memorandum so this deal can move forward. On favor?
Aye.
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 That was a hagonized vote.
As long as it don't backfire on me.
I didn't realize they didn't have three places on this one either.
Okay, number eleven, any new business?
I don't have any.
Deb burn gold bugs.
Any monkey business? Number twelve, approved this free wire purchase order.
So moved.
Second.
On favor? Aye. Number thirteen, motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
I'll make that motion, boo, I'll second.
We're done.